Oh.
One's off.
Well.
I'm not.
I'll go by your phone. We'll call the meeting back in this open session. I reported the student representatives.
You guys.
My name is Paige Wilcox and I'm a sophomore. And the activities that I'm involved in at school are volleyball, basketball, drama club, and student council. And my future plans are to possibly go to UW Oshkosh and become a neonatal nurse.
My name is Logan Grendoff and I'm filling in tonight. I don't know what it is. I'm a ninth grader and I'm in drama club, student council, and forensics. My future plans are for year college. I'm not really decided what I want to do, but I'm interested in IT.
My name is Emily Wilcox. I'm in ninth grade. Some activities I do in school are basketball, volleyball, student council, and drama club. My future plans are to go to college for four or more years and I don't know what I'm gonna go for yet.
The whole school recently participated in a music video for Dane Fellows, just to let him know that we're still here for him and we're missing him.
The drama club will have another variety show on Friday, May 20th. And we had our first meeting last week Friday to discuss what we're gonna do for it.
Forensics is going to state this Saturday in Madison. And the whole forensics club from Port made it to state. They leave Friday at three and stay in a hotel to perform Saturday.
For the sports update, softball is 0-2 and baseball is 0-1. There's a game tonight for both softball and baseball. And there's a JV game tomorrow for boys and a girl, and a boys JV game, or boys game Thursday, sorry.
Prom is at the Alps Club again this year and it's on April 30th and it starts at 8:00 PM. And the grand march is at 8:30 and the theme is Fire and Ice.
Earth Day is April 22nd and it's our eighth annual Earth Day. Programs will be handed out on Tuesday, April 19th. And students will sign up for their activities on April 20th during Black Hawk. Each session will be 45 minutes long and a Q&amp;A will be held at the end.
The National Honor Society had a bowling fundraiser for Dane Fellows also this last Sunday. And every pin was a donation from the pledges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was just some student recognition. Two other items really related to the same student. Senior David Smith tomorrow night will be receiving recognition at the Central Wisconsin Academic All-Stars banquet. That one is put on by our local media through the newspaper. And then on Saturday, he'll be receiving the Cole Scholarship at the scholarship luncheon, which will be held at Kimberly. David is lucky enough that he gets to go to Madison for forensics and he's got the earliest competing time slot so that he can turn around and drive to Kimberly with his mom to receive recognition for the Cole Scholarship, so.
That's fabulous. Congratulations.
All right, President's report. All members are in attendance except Sheldon is excused. Next meeting is an executive session or special meeting on April 28th and regular meeting on May 9th. Administrative reports.
First thing, and I'm gonna kind of move around while I report for a moment, but the energy efficiency projects are complete. We are just waiting on complete control to come and fill the system here in the elementary, fill the water side of the cooling system. Once they get that done, we'll be ready to go. So that will bring a completion to those. Merriwood Construction did get in and replace the supports for the cooling tower on top of the roof. And the roofing has been replaced, so that piece is done. Once the weather turns a little warmer here over the next couple of days, Complete will get that part of the job done. I wanted to, in my last newsletter, I wrote about testing, so I wanted to just at least visualize this and sing some kudos for our staff. I've got a couple different graphs I just wanted to show you this evening. This first one is our, and I apologize if that's not. Hit a set of lights there and hopefully this'll show up. So this is our Badger Exam results from last year compared to our CISA. And our CISA, it makes up schools all the way from Portage and just south of Portage actually, all the way up to Stevens Point. And Badger Exam tested English Language Arts and Mathematics for students in grades three through eight. And as you can see here, in our CISA, we had the second highest English Language Arts score in the Badger Exam. And this is, you know, this is with schools such as Marshfield, Stevens Point, Wisconsin Rapids, smaller schools like Auburn Dale, Sauk Prairie. In math, we have the number one Badger Exam score. Again, this is comparative to our CISA. We dug these results just a little deeper and I will just show you these moments briefly. This is against our conference. So our conference is probably all schools that are similar size to us. There are some that are a little bit bigger, some that are a little bit smaller, but it's not our scores against Stevens Point or Marshfield. And as you can see, we still did very well against our conference. The highest math score, and I apologize, this math score is supposed to be 60. I have that wrong there. This is our ACT composite against our conference. Let's kind of maybe show this to you in graph form. Everything doesn't quite show up there, but, so these are all of our conference schools and this is our ACT score. And again, we had the highest ACT score in our conference. Now, we're just gonna show you two more of these, I think. This is Wood County for the Badger Exam. And we had the, and this is the correct math score, the 60.1. As you can see, little graph form there. And there's our math score. In math, we really did well in math. A lot of hard work done in math. We did well in English Language Arts, I don't want to take away from that. But our math scores were some of the highest around. And then our ACT composite-wise, we had the second highest composite for Wood County. Marshfield has consistently had a very high ACT score, but as you can see, our ACT was not far behind that. And really what I want to just mention here briefly is, this has really been, these results for the Badger Exam and now for the ACT, that was a three-year process by the time we took that test. Just initially learning about the test, working with our students on how the test is structured, because it is not a paper and pencil test, this is on the computer. And our students this week are now taking the forward exam, which is the replacement of the Badger Exam. But as well, we've had students taking the ACT. We just have received our individual student results. And I am confident for such a small group that they are this year, our junior class is our smallest class in the high school, I think they're gonna do just fine on the ACT as well as a group. But this really speaks well to our teachers for the work they've done over the past three, four years on this, and to our students for the work they've done on this. And as well to our community, our parents and our community in general for being supportive. So, you know, some really nice scores here and some really positives for the school district. So I just wanted to share that with you and show you what that looked like compared to some others in our area. I'll try not to throw too many more test results out here for another, another few months, but I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that the state is a little more on the wall with getting us results for these exams a lot sooner, because the Badger Exam results have only been really public for about a month. So, but again, you know, our staff, our students, parents and community have a lot to be proud of there. The last item I just wanted to let you know, last week we had our, the last week? No, two weeks ago now, we had our food service audit. This was conducted by the Department of Public Instruction. They come in and make sure that our food service program is running compliant with USDA requirements and State of Wisconsin requirements. There were a few, a few areas for improvement noted. Generally, our audit went really well. In fact, our auditor spoke with me on the side. He has to go into, this is very extensive, so they have to go and observe how the milk program is being administered in an elementary room. And I will say this, he had commented, he didn't go into all the rooms, so they'd pick a room or two and go into it, but he had commented that our kindergarten classroom is one of the, the way the teacher ran that and the way the classroom is set up is one of the best that he has seen in all of his years of looking at those programs. He was very impressed with how our kindergarten was being handled, not just in terms of the milk program, but just the entire thing, the positive attitude, the way the kids were. So again, speaks well. The couple of notes, we know that we need to get our wellness policy updated in a couple of areas, so that was one of the areas we were noted being somewhat deficient in. One deficiency that was noted, and to give you an idea again of how the small things they're looking at in this and the level of detail, we had received an order of peaches, I believe it was peaches at one point, that they were not, the percentage of the peaches coming from the United States was not over 51%. Now, that simply could have been a shipping error. It could have been a, it could have been a hundred different things. But the way the food service program works, the products are at least supposed to have 51% American, which I suppose is, is good. In this case, we had one order of peaches, one order. And the food, again, our auditor said basically what could have happened is you might have had one lot of peaches that was, met the requirement, sitting next to the very same-looking can that didn't. And when they were grabbing cans in the warehouse from whatever food service, they grabbed the wrong ones and sent it to us. When we asked them, well, what would you do if you didn't get the correct peaches? Because sometimes that's what we need to serve. If it comes in on the truck at 8:00 AM, it might be on the menu that day. He said, "Serve the peaches." He just, you know, it was just one of those, you wouldn't think about it, but it just goes to the complexity, complexity of the audit. They look at our free and reduced student applications. They found one error in all of the free and reduced student applications. That was just one single error and that's been corrected already. So the final thing, we do need to, our vending machine, in the high school, there's no soda. There hasn't been soda in that forever. There's no, there's nothing in there that you would really just shock you. There's no, no All-Star Energy Drink or anything like that. But we cannot have any flavored waters in it for sale during the school day, even if they're zero calorie, because that is not middle school compliant. So we know we have to make a couple of changes to our vending machine. But I do want to, I want to thank our food service. They did an excellent job preparing for this. They spent weeks preparing for this and they had a very good audit. Everything went really well, so.
Nine years ago, my first board meeting, we had to pay $53.45 or something like that, because we were letting the teachers purchase the milk at the same rate as the students. And there was a 5% less reduce, reduction for the students. So we had to reimburse the milk fund for the number of milks that were purchased by the teachers for the year. And I thought, if this isn't fly specking, I don't know what is.
They look at, they look at every spec on, every speck on that fly, let me tell you, when they look at the food service. But ours came out glowing, so.
Yeah, so, well, anyway. All right. Ms. Christie.
I wanted to piggyback off the wellness committee that Mr. Cronin mentioned with the food service audit. Our wellness committee met, and part of our wellness committee is made up of our, our health FIAED teacher and the class we have at the middle school called Choices. And they were looking at our health curriculum and our human growth and development curriculum in particular, to find out that there are some holes in our human growth and development curriculum. And, and to kind of decide how we're going to get those things covered. So Tina McLaughlin has headed up a group of her and Justin Crandall, who teaches Choices. Tina teaches the health. And also Marissa, Marissa Robiski, who's the face teacher. So to talk about how they can get this curriculum covered amongst those classes, what should be covered and how it should be covered. And we're kind of looking into that right now. And then possibly in the future, trickling down to the grade schools, because there's not a lot of that information available at, at any level right now. And so we want to make sure that that curriculum is covered. We do have some curriculums to go off of that are, that are, that the state has as models, so we'll be looking at those, kind of figuring out how we can add not just the physical health curriculum, but also the social emotional part in that Choices class and make sure that that comes together so we're serving our students.
So stay tuned, I'll be back.
All right, thank you. There are no comments or questions, so I guess we'll go on to the consent agenda. Were there gifts?
Yes, there are two things to report. I also had budget revisions this month.
All right.
And they, the first one was to reallocate the Title I funds that were not spent in 1415. And then the second one was the addition of the 2016 PIF grants. And we had one donation. There is a donation received in the fourth grade of two nest boxes from the Baumgart family. And they will be installed in the front of the school by the white fence in hopes of attracting some bluebirds.
All right. With those additions, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. There is no unfinished business, we'll move on to the new business. Need to have a representative of the CISA V convention. So all the years I tracked down the Portage, this year it's.
When is it? I went last year.
May 19th.
Thursday.
And what time?
7:00 PM. It's a Thursday.
Thursday. It was, it was kind of interesting, you know, just to go and I ran into people I knew. I'll, I'll go again.
All right. So I'll nominate Joe. Is there a second to my nomination?
A second?
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So you're it, Joe. Consider approval of the 2015 co-curricular contracts, middle school track coach, Janine?
Genie.
Janine. Track coach.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Assistant softball coach, Lon Radke.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider approval of the resignation of football coach, Justin Crandall.
So move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider approval of the resignation of reading specialist Karen Isaacson.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider approval of reading specialist, special education, one FTE position for 2016-17. This is, from what I'm understanding, Karen and Ms. Christie's assessment of the needs of the district for that position and being combined into one, so that's what this is. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and, is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Probably just skip 16. You sure? All right. Consider approval of the post-employment benefits for Ann Pickett.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Consider approval of the addendum to CISA V contract for 2015, 2016, and 2016 and 17 for additional special education director services.
Well, this one is, for 1516, this would be to finish out May and June for special education services, as Mr. Wiesa has resigned from the Nacusa School District where we were contracting it from, to, for 1516, it is to just finish out the last two months. CISA has given us kind of a worst-case scenario estimate, because they don't truly know what they're walking into. However, I think our, I think we're, we're pretty good on our paperwork and, and other things. I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna face their worst-case scenario by any means. And they only bill us for the hours that we use on that. But I know for the first couple of weeks, they were gonna spend a full day with us, which is, wouldn't be part of the normal contract, just so that they could meet our people, figure out who we've got. And then for 1617, it would be adding the special education director services to our CISA contract and going that route versus working with a Nacusa at this point. There are some things that we feel we can leverage in terms of additional services from CISA for that, in terms of employee in-service and, and working with our special education staff and our regular education staff and making sure our IAPs are done with fidelity. So it'd be our recommendation that the board approve, approve those services moving to the CISA contract.
Is there a motion?
So move. Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Opportunity for individual board member comment. John. Joe?
I would like to thank Ann for her 30 years. We're gonna miss ya. I mean, there's just no way around that. And I think we should give this lady a round of applause. And I would also like to thank Dana for his service on the board. And welcome Kathy and Tracy Jo. As it looks now, that will be our new board. So looking forward to working with Kathy and Tracy in the future and we'll miss Dana. But we'll, we'll make it work.
Leo?
I want to piggyback on, on Joe's comments. Lots of, lots of kudos tonight. The results of the, the testing that were reported to us earlier are not only testimony to the kids' hard work, but as you say, several years of hard effort by our staff and parents. There's so much emphasis on testing today in education, which takes away from real learning in an awful lot of, of the senses. We spend so much time testing, we don't spend time teaching sometimes. And I, I, I resent that as a board member. I resent that it's, it's necessary that we do all this because powers that be dictate. But when the results turn out this well, it's always nice to, to appreciate and thank all of the hard work that went into that. How do you, how do you describe the retirement of Ann Pickett? This is perhaps a bad example. I'm noted for that. When my, when my grandmother died, the preacher at the funeral said, "How do you, how do you look at the community without her?" There was the community before and there's the community after. And I always remembered that. You've been a real part of this community and this school district and its children for almost a third of a century. There, there will be somebody who will, who will succeed you. Like Thomas Jefferson was, was sent to, to France to replace Ben Franklin at, at the French Court. And the minister there said, "Oh, you're, you're, Mr. Jefferson, you're here to, to replace Mr. Franklin or Dr. Franklin." And Jefferson said, "No, I'm here to succeed him. Nobody can replace him." Dana, your service to the board is, is appreciated. You, you came into this job under very trying circumstances. And if the measure of your success as a board member is to leave the position better than you found it, in my observation, coming after you, from what I've heard and certainly what I've seen, that would be, that would be more than true. If, if, if you doubt, if you doubt the, the success or the, the value of your efforts, look around you. You will be missed. We welcome your attendance at and contributions to the district in any way you see fit over the coming years. We hope to see your continued presence at some of our events. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next board meeting, July?
Can we look at the April 28th time first?
Could, could I, could I ask that we change the time of the April 28th meeting to a little later so that I am able to attend? Is that a problem for anyone?
No, not a problem.
Kathy, is that a problem for you? I have, I have class until 6 o'clock that night and I'll be in the building. I just won't, I'm assuming we're going to meet in your office or where do you want to meet?
We may need just.
May meet here?
We need the rooms.
Okay. Can we do 6:30?
Sure.
6:30 on the 28th, okay? I would, I would greatly appreciate that opportunity so I can actually be here.
Leo's been a member of the insurance committee, so I think it's important that he's able to.
Thank you. The other times seem to be fine.
All right, so do we have a July date?
The July date would be the 11th.
Are we gonna do any adjustment for the July date based on potential vacations or staff issues? Some years we bumped that later in July to.
Well, it's still early, so if you need to, you can, but.
The last couple of years, we've been moving that August date a little later.
Right.
I'd say just leave it on and see how everything is after.
Play it out as they come. That's probably the good, good advice. July what?
11.
July 11.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or, those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.